Good evening, let's call the Common Council Meeting of the City of Milton to order Tuesday, October 15th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. And can we get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Ace Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Many motions. All those in favor? All those opposed, we have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance. Kim, I just want to make sure that you are ready because the next item on the agenda is the most important item of the evening. Where the mayor reads the proclamation for Halloween trick-or-treat hours. Whereas, the City of Milton wishes a safe and festive Halloween celebration for its citizens and encourages participation in the gayety of this holiday by both young and old. And whereas miniature ghosts, goblins, witches, and other mysterious creatures emerge each year on October 31st. And whereas they ring doorbells of their neighborhood and friends to extort goodies. And whereas the safety of these small creatures is assured by an accompanying adult and is a source of amusement and good cheer for both the very young and the older people whom they visit and entertain. Whereas I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, proclaim Thursday, October 31st, 2019, Halloween in the City of Milton. Therefore, let it be known that Thursday, October 31st, 2019 shall be known as Halloween Trick-or-Treat Day and the celebration will be observed between the hours of 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. And I will sign it the 15th day of October, 2019. And we can get copies to anybody that would like those. We need trick-or-treaters here next year. Everybody needs to bring their kids and grandkids in costume. Okay, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. We have Dave Fisher. And did you want to talk now or during the presentation? Okay. Approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Presentation, discussion, and direction regarding the draft 2020 annual budget preparation.
Okay. For those of you who've had the fortune or misfortune of sitting through my presentation now, this is my sixth one. And I am going to venture and try to hold myself to it that this will likely be the shortest one I've given in six budgets. And you'll see why, hopefully. So this is the 2020 draft budget overview. What that means is this is the budget that has been prepared with the department heads and the mayor and presented today for the council to begin considerations. This is a draft budget, so by no means is any number set in stone within the budget, either on the expenditure side or the revenue side, although it's more difficult to change the revenue side. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that even when we approve the publication tonight, the budget that is presented will very likely change. So in years past, I could say that it absolutely will change because many years in the past we came to this point of the equation and there was overages that we were aware of. But this year, so far, that is not the case. So before we start with 2020 budget, I want to kind of do just a quick recap of 2019. And that helps set the picture of kind of where we are in terms of the 2020 budget construct. In 2019, the City of Milton was the fastest-growing city in Rock County, and that's established by the net new construction percentage, as reported by the state of Wisconsin. We are the lowest taxed city in Rock County with a 9.47 tax rate from the city's side of the overall mill rate. We saw $31.3 million increase in equalized value in 2018, and expenses only increased 2%. We approved over 16% of our streets this year, and we did all of this while being the lowest taxed city in Rock County and no new borrowing. So the 2020 budget, that again kind of sets the table. Same budget, or same slide I've had in every budget presentation I've ever given here, these are the five goals that we have with every budget. A balanced budget, stay within levy limits, qualify for expenditure restraint, no reductions in service, and no new borrowing. The draft budget as prepared and presented this evening shows an increase in general fund expenditures of just 2.28%. So that is a very relatively small increase in the overall general fund expenditures. So how did we get there? There are really three major factors when we put the budget together with the mayor and the department heads. There's the city growth, that's obviously a factor, there's been a lot of discussion about that, especially from my seat. There's the expenditure restraint, and then there's the affordability aspect of it. City growth is really what the state allows individual municipalities to increase their levy based on net new construction. And we are fortunate that we were the, again, the fastest-growing community in Rock County with a 2.54% net new construction. That all sounds wonderful, and it absolutely is, but what that equates to is the state has allowed us to increase our budget by $62,312. That's what you get to be for being the fastest-growing city in Rock County. Not going to not take it, but before people get super excited saying, "All right, 14 officers and you're going to build a new bus terminal." 62,000. Expenditure restraint. This is something that we have to keep in mind every year. Expenditure restraint is an imposed cap that the state puts on that says you can only increase, although you may be able to increase your levy by $62,000, you can only increase your expenses by a certain percentage. This year, the percentage increase in expenses outpaces that of levy limits. So there's already an inherent imbalance in those two numbers, but thus is the case, and that's how we have to work through the system every year. And the last piece is affordability. When we look at the budget, as we say every year, there's many things we can do, but there are certain things that we should or should not do. And that's really one of the major roles of the council when creating this budget, which in essence is a policy document. So let's talk a little bit more about city growth. I've said this a couple times, I'll say it again. Milton was the fastest-growing community in Rock County with a 2.54% net new construction. We realized approximately $31.3 million worth of new equalized value, and that includes with TIF districts. This number was 18.7 last year, so you can see that the number continues to increase. $74.6 million worth of new growth in the last three years. That's a 21% increase to our overall equalized valuation for the City of Milton. Those are big numbers. Levy limits are again based solely on net new construction, however. So the $31.3 million in equalized value is somewhat of a moot point in terms of levy limits. It's still important to us and still is a sign of economic vitality in the community, but levy limits is only concerned about net new construction. Again, just a little reminder what levy limits are. Levy limits provide the maximum amount in which a city may increase or decrease its property tax levy. So there's a lot of talk about tax rates, there's a lot of talk about mill rates, but the ultimate, the only variable that can, that a local municipality can control is its levy, and that is capped by the state. As presented this evening, this budget does meet the state-imposed levy limits. The second item, expenditure restraint. So we have, already have levy limits, which is one ceiling. Expenditure restraint is how much you can increase your overall expenses. So as we saw a couple slides ago, our levy is allowed to be increased 62,000. Our expenses are allowed to be increased 138,000. Unfortunately, it's the lower of, in this case, from a budgetary standpoint, so really our budget really can only increase 62,000 before we bump up against that expenditure restraint. It's important to always attempt to meet the expenditure restraint because the state does incentivize that. We call it a bonus in this slide, I'm not sure what the exact word is. We can call it state aid, we can call it an incentive, we can call it a bonus. But you can see that this bonus is a significant amount up into the six digits. However, you can see over the last few years, that number is starting to decline. And there are probably a multitude of factors as to why that is, but very likely what that is, is the pool of money for expenditure restraint bonus or incentive doesn't really ever change from the state level, it's how many communities can qualify for it. So every year that ebbs and flows. So what I, what we presume is happening here is annually more communities are qualifying for expenditure restraint. We have been able to qualify for it all six budgets that Dan and I have been a part of, and I'm sure probably many budgets before that as well. Expenditure restraint only applies to certain municipalities, we are one of those municipalities, and the state is estimating ERP to be 3.36%, which again refers back to that number before of 138,012. At this time, the budget does qualify for the expenditure restraint, simply because the levy limit is below that, so by default. Still good, though. So what does this all mean? The city, in the city's 2020 budget, we will levy for the full $3.3 million that we're allowed. And as presented on October 15th today, we do qualify for the state-imposed levy limits and expenditure restraint. What will the impact be? In the city's 2020 draft budget, expenditures only increased 2.28%. There are no reductions in service, no new borrowing. This maintains employee relations, maintains capital and infrastructure funding, and the city will not know the final tax rate until mid-November when the ERP and final assessment ratio is known, as well as the other overlying taxing jurisdictions and our portion, our proportion of those overlying taxing jurisdictions. So we don't have any control over the tax rate. We have control of the levy, the levy is a variable within the creation or the quotient that is the tax rate, but we can only control our levy. Any questions so far? This is kind of always the background piece of it, how did we get here? Any questions, thoughts? Okay. So we'll go into the 2020 budget construct as to how it's been presented this evening. And again, these numbers can change. So what we look at here is what's the difference between 2019 and 2020? And you'll see employee relations went up 99,000, non-property tax revenue increased 16,000, and operational expenditures only increased 13,000. What makes up those specific categories? 3% wage increase to non-protective employees, which is everyone who is not a sworn officer is 34,000, 3% increase for protective employees, everyone who is a sworn officer, 28,000. WRS, which is a rate that is established by the state, we don't have any control over that. The increase for protective employees, meaning those who are sworn officers, went up $8,700, and those who are non-protective employees went up 2,000. There is a different rate that the state establishes between protective and non-protected employees. I believe the non-protected employee rate is something like 6.8% that the city and employee contributes, and for protective services, it's 11.5 this year, or something like that, right?
I don't remember the protective, but general is 6.75. And the increase in protective this year, the spread was 80 basis points, so 0.8%. It's almost a 4% increase compared to last year. And in my 10, 11 years of doing this, I have not seen that kind of increase before.
And again, that's something that we have no control over, Act 10. Put that in place, and that is the law of the land. Health insurance increases went up $25,000. We saw 11.9% increase to our health insurance premiums, which means the employees' health insurance premiums went up 11.9%, and the City of Milton's health insurance premiums went up 11.9%. That equates to a $25,000 increase to health insurance. 11.9 maybe sounds like a lot, but we were pleasantly surprised by that. We were predicting somewhere between 15 and 16% increase. So as weird of a world as we live in, an 11.9% increase was a surprise. Operational, or revenue, I'm sorry, revenue sources. Again, these are increases to revenue, so any times you see the parenthetical annotation, that means that's actually an increase, so you've got to kind of think reverse. Or no, not on this side, I'm sorry. Yeah. Reduction in school officer costs in the school. We have an agreement with the School District of Milton in which they pay 100% of the officer's time that is at the school district, or the SRO, or School Resource Officer. This payment went down $6,000 simply because that officer is no longer on our health insurance. Simple as that. That's how micro our budget is. Something as simple as an officer or employee changing health plans can have that much of an impact on our budget. Personal property state aid payment went up. Fire department administrative fees went up. Road aid went up, I think that's the first time I've seen that since I've been here. Shared revenue went down, TID administrative fees went down, shared revenue payment went down, and then there were other slight increases in revenue of $1,500. So overall increase in revenue sources by 16,000. Operational expenditures actually saw a decrease in the general government, based mostly on contingency, but there was also a decrease in election equipment. Public safety saw an increase, mainly in part due to the fire department, as all the changes that they are seeing at their level with the hiring of the three new full-time employees. So that is exciting, and that's the impact that we saw, again, compared from 2019 to 2020. I don't want anybody to think that we're only giving the fire department $21,000. That's just how much it went up this year. Again, trying to compare apples to apples. Road salt increased $16,000. Debt service decreased $25,000, so that's good news. And other expenditures increased roughly $10,000 when you kind of put that all together. So overall, there was actually a decrease in total operational expenditures of $2,965. Nonprofit requests, which we will talk more with our respective nonprofits. Right now, in this budget, they are flat-funded at $10,000, which was the funding that they received in 2019, indicated in this slide that they have requested, each individual entity has requested increases. But the budget, we tried to flat-line everything, and then those decisions, the council can adjust those numbers as they see fit. So with all that being said, we go back to one of the original slides. But what are our goals? We want to have a balanced budget, stay within levy limits, qualify for expenditure restraint, no reductions in service, and no new borrowing. And at this time, based on the budget presented, this checks all five boxes. We've never been able to do that at this stage in the game as early as October 15th, but there are a number contributing factors to that, and we can talk a little bit about that if folks have questions. There still are a few unknowns. Oh, sorry, was there a question or was that just a feedback? There still are a few unknowns. Our assessment ratio, as I mentioned before, is unknown. The assessment ratio is established by the state of Wisconsin. And again, the assessment ratio is how the state views our property values and how properties are assessed in comparison to the fair market value, or what they perceive the fair market value to be. So last year, we were at 98.5%. We're predicting that to be 92% and potentially lower, but we won't know that probably until mid to late November. And that will be one of the last pieces that really kind of starts to codify that overall tax rate. However, it does not affect the levy. If, in some world, even though legally we couldn't, we were forced to adopt the budget tonight, irrespective of what happens to the assessment ratio, it would not change the budget. Because again, we can only control levy. And we don't know the certified CPI calculation for the final ERP calculation, but we're pretty confident that that 3.36 number is what it would be. So if there is a change in that, it's going to likely be nominal.
And ultimately, it doesn't matter because levy limits are what drives, is driving this particular budget.
Correct. Again, remember ERP was 138,000, levy limits was 62, so it doesn't really impact it. But those are things that we still don't know at this time. So just a few takeaways from this draft budget. Again, this budget maintains current service levels. This budget maintains employee relations. This budget maintains capital infrastructure funding levels, so they're the same as they were in 2019. This budget only increases general fund expenditures by 2.28%. This budget qualifies for state-imposed levy limits and expenditure restraint. And this budget has no new tax levy-supported borrowing component. So this will be, I think, the fifth year in a row we've been able to say that, or fifth budget in a row, I'm sorry. With that being said, here's one of the numbers that everybody always is interested in. We're still in a bit of a debt-aggressive debt payback period. So currently, 24.4 cents of every city tax dollar collected goes directly to debt service. So that number did decrease from last year. I believe it was 25.3 last year, and it was, I think, 26.8 the year before that, and maybe 27.4 the year before that. So it continues to go down, and it will continue to go down based on kind of the framework or the map, the roadmap that we've set out for debt repayment, but it's still very high. 24.4 cents is still very high, but at least we're below a quarter. We do have the budget schedule again, which we have talked about, and we've put a larger readout of that in the packet. Again, we're going to approve the budget for publication tonight. That would have the budget public hearing on November 12th, and then we could approve the budget on the 19th or the 26th. It's very likely at this point, based on all the information that we have, that we could approve the budget on the 19th, but ultimately that would be the council's decision if they want to do that, and if they want to have additional meetings to talk about certain aspects of the budget, we certainly can sprinkle those in as well, but those are the milestones, those are the kind of the must-haves in the budget process.
And that's keeping inconsistent with having approval of the budget on a different night as the public hearing.
Right.
You would have the option, I guess, of approving the budget on the 12th of November if you so chose.
That's true.
And the 19th is a regularly scheduled council meeting, and the 26th would be a special meeting, the 12th is a special meeting, and the 26th is two days before Thanksgiving.
Right.
So if you caught all that. It's the second Tuesday of November.
It would be a special meeting, yes.
And we run a, we, I would have liked to have done the public hearing on the 5th, but it didn't meet the number of days that state statutes require. As in the past, we've tried to mitigate all the special meetings, but because of state statutes, sometimes that just doesn't work from a timing perspective.
Yeah, and you mix in the holiday in there, it becomes challenging. So this budget schedule is something that we'll ask the council to take action on when we approve the budget publication, which I believe is two items from now, but we want to kind of at least give you our rationale behind it. There are some additional handouts that we included in the packet that break down, again, in probably greater detail than what was just presented in terms of revenues and expenditures based on the individual departments. And then there is kind of a budget history, revenues and expenses that goes back to 2017 and compares it to the 2020 budget. There is also an item, or a handout that shows just the changes between 2019 and 2020, which is kind of what I did in the budget presentation, but it provides a lot more detail. And then there are the, then there is the levy limit and ERP calculation page, which shows how levy limits are calculated and how ERP is calculated and what that means for the budget. And then the last piece of information is one that I just handed out today. This was an item that Dan created today based on a question that the mayor had last week. And it kind of breaks down the budget in terms of expense categories. So the question was, what percentage of our budget is wages? And what percentage of our budget is the fire department? What percent of our budget? With really the kind of the general, I think, the thought process behind it of what percentage of the budget has some level of discretion in it that wouldn't directly impact either staff levels or directly impacts service levels. So Dan created this printout today, which was quite interesting to the both of us, frankly, considering how much time we spend with this. With really, again, the idea that these are the major expense categories, the top 10 expense categories, and it really shows that about 9% of the budget are areas that have, don't have a direct impact on a person or a direct impact on a service that is pretty much required. Some of the numbers that jumped out to me, frankly, I expected wages to be a higher percentage of the budget. I thought they would be closer to 60%. Now, within individual departments, that number varies greatly. City Hall, it's probably closer to 90. But you know, to Public Works, and it's, that number decreases. Debt service, again, this is one of the challenges that we continue to have. Just debt service payments alone equate to 16.29% of the budget. So 16% of the budget that we collect immediately goes to pay for past decisions. The fire department is the third-largest expense at 7.7. Capital allocation, I know a lot gets talked about capital allocation, that actually only constitutes 5% of our budget. The one that probably is most shocking is road salt. Is our seventh-largest expense at $71,000.
Up this year?
Yes.
Why did it go? Why did it go up so much this year?
That's just because of the demand for last year, and that's the state does a bid, and they actually bid it out to get the lowest price, but that was just, just what the companies bid for the increase.
So I know we've talked a lot about that in years past, and I remember last year and the year before, I made it kind of a, and maybe a bit of an antiquated example, but you know, when utilities go up 8%, that is a tremendous increase in the budget. So when road salt, doesn't sound like much, when road salt increases, we're talking about our seventh-largest expense is increasing. And those are things that we really don't have control over at all. I guess we do have control over it, we just could not buy salt. And then we might have seven new names on the ballot in April, I don't know. But I mean-
Won't be employed by insurance companies.
That's the challenge that, that's some of the challenges that we face. You know, and I don't mean to say that the council has no discretion in these. Of course you have discretion over the fire department, of course you have discretion over wages and benefits. You know, legal, an attorney, we have no discretion over that, Mark just calls the shots. But I mean, but my point is, we're in a contract with that, we're in a contract with our IT provider, we're in a contract with our assessor. Property liability and workers' comp insurance, insurance rates are insurance rates. Utilities, we have zero control over. Capital allocation, we certainly have control over. We certainly, I guess we have control over our utilities, we can turn the lights off. We certainly have control over our capital allocation, but again, that number gets a lot of attention, and it's only 5% of the budget. Fire department, we do the best we can through the fire commission, that's our third-largest expense. So that, you know, I mean, I think what this illustrates to me is that there's a, there's just, there's a lot in the budget that is pretty much there unless you start to cut into people or direct service provisions.
And inside the fire department, as we talked about when we were talking budget at the end of September, I think it's 75 or 80% of their budget is people. So you know, if we were to actually take the allocation of people from the fire department and dump it up to the first line item, we probably would be at 60% because-
That's true.
You know, a good chunk of that 390,000 is people, about 80% of it, so.
So I guess in conclusion of my comments, I'll use a quote that I gave to the great Stan Stricker who's out in the audience right now. He said, "What are the big takeaways from this budget?" He said, "Al, what are the big takeaways from this budget?" And I said, "The big takeaways are, there are no big takeaways. This budget is pretty much a continuation of service levels and staffing levels from years past." I know that's always our goal, and we always attempt to do that, but that is a challenge in times when there's decreasing revenues and increasing expenses, and this year is no different in that regard. But I will say that there are two big contributing factors to this specific budget and why this budget doesn't have as much change, or I don't want to use the word controversy, but I just did. But there, really, there's a lot of smoothing kind of activities that Dan and I and the department heads have implemented over the years to try to mitigate big swings in the budget, big undulations. As you can see, when one police officer changes their health insurance, that's a $6,000 swing to the budget. to the budget. Again, $6,000 doesn't sound like a lot, but when you have levy limits and expenditure restraint, if you increase the budget $6,000, let's say that officer jumped on our insurance, we would have to provide him insurance, or her insurance, and then look to cut $6,000 somewhere else. We have attempted to smooth the budget so those undulations aren't so dramatic, and we're seeing that now through a couple of years of that practice while still being able to keep the levy and expenditures as low as possible because we don't have these big spikes. And that goes for some of the capital acquisitions and how we fund some of our contracts and how we fund some of our equipment purchases, how we fund some of our, how we fund our assessor. Again, those are smoothed out over the budget so we don't see these big swings. So that's one big contributing factor. The other big contributing factor, of course, is growth. Growth in terms of a budget, growth is good. It is what the state mandates that you do. It's, I think I used the joke last year, it's like Morgan Freeman's character in Shawshank Redemption says, "Either get busy living or get busy dying." And the state says, "You better get busy living because that's the only way you're going to increase your budget." And that's a reasonable approach. I have no objection to that approach. The challenge is, is when we grow faster than any community in our county, which is one of the fastest growing counties in the state, we get to see a $62,000 increase. And again, $62,000, we're not going to look a gift horse in the mouth, but a $62,000 increase does not get us a 12th officer. It does not buy a snowplow, it does not, you know, pave a street even, it just doesn't. So again, we're, you know, we're appreciative of it, and we play by rules, but we're trying to, you know, smooth this out so these big changes don't happen. The day will come when that net new construction number is not 2.5, which was the highest in the county. It might be .5, it might be negative. That day will come. Hopefully not soon, we believe that we will hopefully ride that wave better than maybe some of our neighbors based on some of the planned growth that we already have. The plan commission just approved 108-unit apartment complex this evening. That's slated to go online, you know, in the 2022 tax roll. So now we're looking out and saying, okay, we're comfortable that that growth is projected out. We have residential neighborhoods that are still being built, we have others that are being proposed, we have, you know, projected developments out in the industrial park. So we're hoping to weather that storm, but the day will come when that number is lower, and that just makes the challenges all that harder.
But the positive is...
There's a lot of positives.
That we have a good debt management program underway and that we have good investment strategies underway, and that'll help us weather that too if we...
Yes, yes. And the investment strategies cannot be overlooked. Dan has done a wonderful job negotiating and monitoring those. We have seen investment revenues increase dramatically over the last few years. In a time of decreasing interest rates, we're still looking good, and that is due to the diligence that Dan provides and things that the rest of us don't have, frankly, the chops or competency to keep on top of. So yes, those are, there is a lot of good news in this budget. I said this is going to be my shortest presentation, I think that it probably was, honestly, because I think it was probably less than 30 minutes. But that's because it's good. So the big takeaway is, no big takeaways.
In government, we like boring.
Yes.
We strive for boring.
Especially when it comes to finance.
A long time ago, Jake McGee, who used to work at the Gazette, said, "What's your goal in your position?" And I said, "To be invisible." And if a day, hopefully the day will come when people don't need to think about their government, but I don't know if we're there yet. It's in the news a lot. So that's all I have. Questions for Dan or myself or any of the, any other staff members who all played a role in the creation of this, including the mayor, obviously?
You will also see in that levy limit calculation, it's the fourth document, the one labeled number four, there is, in order, there was some unused levy capacity that we're utilizing in this budget. And we will have to pass a resolution and get 2/3 of the council's vote to utilize that. So that, you know, that'll just be a logistic thing that has to happen later, but I don't want that to be overseen because that is a $40,000 addition to the levy that we can take advantage of. And we haven't been able to take advantage of it in previous years because our debt service had been increasing and/or we were bumping up against expenditure restraint. And so this feels like the perfect time to utilize it because it's still available to us, and they haven't taken it away either. And we meet all the qualifying factors without harming our future selves.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say you guys have done an awesome job with this budget. It looks great. You did a great job of explaining everything, Al. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dan, for all of the hard work that you and all of the department heads have put into this. It's definitely worth it, and I hope that our citizens realize how much you all have put into this for their benefit.
And I would be remiss in saying that it goes beyond the department heads. You know, I know how we regularly confers with many, many members of his staff to put together their budget. I know Chief Mark Ward does the same, Ashley does the same. So, you know, it's, it is truly a team effort, and I don't, I don't say that to be cliche or to pay lip service, it is really a team effort.
I'll say ditto. Very much.
I'd say, I feel the same way, so.
That's fine. One thing that is not included in this budget, which we will present on, hopefully on the 5th of October, is a list of capital. We have a capital number, but we're still getting, as recently as today, getting numbers in for various capital items, so we'll bring that in on the 5th. The bottom line number won't change, 254 won't change, it's just a matter of how we fill that 254, what makes the cut and what doesn't. That's where the real wrestling match is, Bill.
For the department heads, not for the council. Sometimes the council likes to wait. The tough decisions are always made by staff and departments.
Would you, you and Howie and whoever else is involved, would you share that list with us, just out of curiosity?
Oh, yeah.
Of what didn't make the cut, so we kind of get a sense of future planning and...
We don't even have anything that adds up to 255 right now. So, yeah, that's just a plug number to keep the number flat.
Right, well, we, yeah, we know that the list that we have, if we were to do it all, is greater than 255. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't developed that list yet to get to 255, yeah. Yeah, I mean, Howie's Lamborghini.
Well, yeah. If Howie was missing arms, Lamborghini.
And I like how the department heads and the staff look at it like their own budget. Like, everybody has a list of wants, and it would be nice if we all got Howie's Lamborghini too, but they have to, they have to decide what are their priorities. So there's a list of wants, and then there's a list of priorities that they submit to.
I agree.
And oftentimes throughout the year, and what we want them to do too, is to be flexible because if you have a major breakdown in a piece of equipment, then they, then something else might come off of that list of wants. So they do a really nice job through all the departments.
Right, and we're always investigating opportunities for alternative funding sources. If we remember barricade, barricade trailer gate of 2018, you know, we were, we were three quarters of the way through the year and were able to apply for a grant that funded that. So we were able to take that off the list without using general fund dollars or tax levy supported dollars to purchase that equipment. So that's always, that's, that's a, that process doesn't stop on November 19th or whenever the budget is adopted, that's a, that's a 365-day-a-year thing.
And I think it's important for the public to recognize that, that we're not trying to not provide services, we're not trying to cut ourselves to the point where we can't take care of things in the community, you know?
Right.
And that's important, so. If we need equipment, we're going to get it, but if we don't have to have it, that's great too, so.
Yeah, and not to further complicate or pontificate on this, you know, growth, with growth comes challenges, and to all things, there is a tipping point. You know, we have talked kind of anecdotally about a 12th officer, but that is something that is absolutely on our horizon. Again, plan commission approved 108-unit apartment complex this afternoon. We know that there are more single-family residential development homes coming. At some point, the demand for service will outpace the resources available, and those are, those are going to be big, tough decisions to make. Those will be undulations within the budget that are beyond our control to a certain degree. We'll never have probably a net new construction number that would allow us to just simply add a 12th officer and keep that person on staff. It's going to take shuffling the deck, it may take the R-word, referendum, it may take a variety of things. But that is something that, that the chief is very keen on. We know that there is no magic number. When we get to 5,978 citizens, we're going to need a 12th officer. So it's something that we're vigilant in monitoring, calls for services continue to increase as we continue to increase residences and property values continue to increase, those calls for services increase and have a greater impact on the community. So those are things that we need to be mindful of this year. Again, I don't want to use the word easy, but this year's budget was streamlined. It's likely not always going to be that way, and it may not be just the net new construction number that makes it more complicated, so. Is that a fair segue? Ashley may need a 12th librarian.
Sounds like a foot. Or just a seventh, if I'm counting right. Eight.
So that's all, that's all I have, and again, this is a working document. It is able to be changed, so if you have questions, if you have comments about the detail or want to see even greater detail on any item, and this goes for the folks up here or anybody out there, please feel free to contact Dan or myself. We're more than happy to sit down and go over this. Shouldn't take 42 minutes, but we can have it take two hours and 42 minutes if you want, so. Thank you.
Okay.
Don't you get close to your second quickest.
All right, we're going to go on to number eight, presentations by nonprofits requesting funds in the 2020 budget, and we have the Milton House.
Sorry, okay, checking. Hi, everybody. I believe I've met everybody in this room, but just for the record, my name is Carrie Clubba, and I'm the executive director of the Milton Historical Society. First and foremost, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to come to present to you today about the Milton House and about the Milton Historical Society. Our mission is about to be on the screen when... So sorry.
I'm sorry, technology. Number one.
So just so folks are aware during this lull, the longest podcast we've ever recorded included both Carrie and I, and that was 38 minutes, so if you're trying to make your presentation longer...
Oh, no, was that the first podcast went to 30? Oh my gosh, I thought I beat it with the Weird Milton one. Okay. Um, I have it on a thumb drive, would you like me to use that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I lost Wi-Fi too. So this presentation was emailed out to everybody. If you haven't had a chance to see it yet, I know you guys have got it brought up, but if you want to follow along, it's in your email.
Okay. All right, thanks, everybody. The mission at the Milton Historical Society is that we are a nonprofit committed to preserving the cultural and historical heritage of Milton and its surrounding area. The society also serves as the steward of the Milton House Museum, which is a national historic landmark and the last authenticated underground railroad station that can be toured in the state of Wisconsin. We house literally thousands of items that tell the story of Milton, and it is perhaps the underground railroad that's usually at the forefront, but we are so much more in that we are that resource where people can come to learn about their past to help inform their future. We also are host to several special events, many of which have become synonymous with Milton itself, and these programs educate, entertain, and encourage community participation. Milton House has seen a steady increase in attendance since receiving our national landmark status, and we've consistently drawn in more than 10,000 visitors annually since 2016. In fact, in 2018, we set a new record with 12,797 guests. This year, we have already broken the 10,000 guest mark. This is directly tied to an economic impact on the community and the surrounding region in that in 2018, visitors to Rock County spent $251.2 million. So how I try to explain that is that as the Milton House is a gateway destination in that they come for the Milton House, and then after the tour, they eat at one of our city's family restaurants, they shop in one of our boutique stores, they play in one of the parks, and they gas up at the local station before returning home. It also directly relates to local state tax money coming into the community thanks to the Milton House. To demonstrate the level at which the Milton House draws in new monies into Milton, I put together a word cloud for you to see. Now, what a word cloud does is that every time a word, or in this case, a city name comes up in a document, the larger the word will appear on the cloud before you. And I input the information from our visitor log, so every time somebody comes into the Milton House, we ask them where they have come from. And yes, Milton does make a strong showing, you can see it kind of there in the middle, but look at how we are drawing in people from Madison, Milwaukee, Jeansville, Rockford, Chicago, and beyond. We also draw in people from all over the globe. This year alone, we've had guests from Ghana, Vietnam, Brazil, the UK, Australia, Slovakia, Germany, and Kyrgyzstan. Not kidding, yeah. And I think that has to do with the fact that the Milton House is gaining more and more attention through regional and national media outlets. This year alone, the Milton House has been featured in or visited by authors from all of the publications you see here. We also anticipate that we will see an additional spike in awareness and subsequently more tours coming in 2020. Recently in August, we hosted a crew from Nat Geo's Drain the Oceans. Their mini-documentary on the sinking of the Schooner Home in Lake Michigan will feature a 10-minute segment on the Milton House and the Underground Railroad. And with recent visits from the lieutenant governor and the secretary of tourism, we believe we will be a recommended Wisconsin destination at a upcoming major event next year, Milwaukee. Okay. The Milton House, as you can see, has taken on significant capital in the prior years, whereas 2019's budget is much more reflective of what a true operational costs are. As you can see, thanks to a lot of different sources, we've been able to accomplish... As you can see, thanks to a lot of different sources, we've been able to accomplish some major preservation work, but now we're back to the actual operations of day-to-day. Our main sources of revenue are without question, school tours, that's our bread and butter, membership dues, the summer tour season, and special events and fundraisers. Without major capital drives, we can't take on a lot of those major capital projects that we have in the prior years. Successful summer season is truly what makes all the difference to our organization. Now, this year, the council requested that we submit our requests a little bit differently. We were asked to submit a more formal form by August 31st explaining how we feel that a contribution from the City of Milton to one of the nonprofits benefits the community, either how it fits into the strategic plan by the city, the comprehensive plan, or one of the Goodrich Park plans. Now, I wanna be specific, when we stated our request, it was with that intent of just, in an ideal world, if there was all sorts of unlimited revenue and we could have what we wanted, what is it that we would ideally ask for in that scope? So I do wanna be very clear why you saw that increase in what we requested. And that's because we felt that in the comprehensive plan, I should point out that the Milton House is specifically mentioned 32 times. The Milton House is definitely something that the city has always been very strong in their advocacy and support of. And specifically, I pulled out two mentions. The first was that in the comprehensive plan, it was suggested that the city explore ways to increase staffing, to handle increased visitor traffic, and that the curator and the Milton Historical Society should project staffing needs and costs to the City of Milton and the community. The second was a mention of promoting Milton's historic resources as a local and regional tourist attraction. So how I perceived that was, how do we get the word out? How do we advertise that we have these incredible resources in this community for people to come and visit? So as we increase advertising, we would also probably need to increase the help in order to accommodate all the expected increase in tourism traffic. And I also wanna point out that the Milton House summer staff is probably one of the greatest resources we do have. They're largely composed of local high school students, and these phenomenal young men and women are the ambassadors of the Milton community to the national, and as you saw, international visitors that we see every year. We are blessed to have so many passionate and hard-working students in our community. And experience earned during their time at the Milton House translates to remarkable futures. Our guides have gone on to be engaged community activists, some have become educators, and two actually served as interns at Representative Stiles' office just this summer. It translates into excellent real-world experience. Now, to show in a bar graph how we were asking for funds to be allocated, contributions from the city could be put towards the cost of staffing our historic site from May through September. We would also use a portion of these funds towards marketing and advertising purchases that would inform potential guests on our amazing museum and tour availability. So I tried to show on the graph here where we've been at for our advertising and payroll costs over these past several years. Again, I'm gonna kind of end where I started, and that is, I am so grateful that we have a city that invites us to come here to ask for these contributions. Not every city is able to do so, so we count ourselves very blessed. The city and the council have consistently been our greatest supporter year after year. And as I know, you guys know, the Milton House was the epicenter from which this community grew. It was from this little corner of the intersection of two pioneer trails that the community flourished and thrived. The Milton House is remarkable not only for its history, but for its great fortune in being surrounded by a community that knows and appreciates its historical and cultural value. So I want to thank you all for your continued support, and if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
One of the different things that we've done recently is the cooperative advertising effort with the Chamber of Commerce and Janesville. It's always nice to get some feedback on whether or not you're seeing a difference from that in the people who are coming. Do you sense or do you know that there are some that are coming because of the advertising that's being done cooperatively?
I can only speak to research that we did at one specific event. We took visitor surveys during the arts and crafts and the chicken barbecue. So I had those student guides out there with their clipboards asking people, where did you come from? How did you hear about us? And I would say there were a marked increase of people who came because they had seen Facebook or some other form of social media advertising. I think there's no doubt that the partnership with the consortium is paying out, for sure.
Carrie, could you just kind of go over with us what your plans for 2020 as far as some of the, some of your building needs and fundraising that you will have going on?
Well, I'm kind of pleased to say this is one of the first years where I don't have a major pressing preservation need on one of the key buildings on our campus. We are looking ahead at continued improvements to our stable, which has been used more and more over these past couple of years. There's definitely going to be a pressing need within our warehouse as far as updating and making sure that we maintain an appropriate setting for storage of a lot of these archives. And as you're gonna see, if you drive past today, we're continuing our work on the preservation of the Blacksmith Shop. They're working on the exterior, and soon we're gonna have to complete the interior preservation, get it opened up again for the community.
I'm just curious of how your activities with drawing in kids for movies and so forth, how successful or unsuccessful that has been in getting other people from the community into that area.
I feel that especially when I see events like movie nights or we see Twilight Tours, what is best is seeing the new faces. Most notably, this past year, we had a membership picnic. It was, we were celebrating the 175th anniversary, and it was my privilege to meet a lot of new neighbors, people who saw that we were having a picnic and came by to celebrate with us. A lot of these special events, though they do serve to enhance the community, they actually are drawing in people outside, showing them what makes the quality of life of Milton so spectacular, so splendid. So simple events like movie nights play into that. We actually took a poll last year, and we had more people from Edgerton and Janesville at movie nights than we did from Milton, which we thought was kind of interesting. But it was just that one night. Goes to show you, though, how it is one of those events that does generate interest and draws people in. Okay.
Anybody else, Carrie? Thank you very much, and thank you for all your doing.
Thank you again for having me guys come, appreciate that.
Okay, Gathering Place.
Hello, everyone, Dave Fisher here from the Gathering Place. I know many of you are familiar with my face and why I'm here. But before I get started, I wanna say a couple of things. What you've just heard from Carrie is remarkable. You're talking about a nonprofit leader here in town that really embraces what she does and brings the enthusiasm that all of us need to share, because this gal is fantastic, okay? It's just a privilege to work with her, know with her, and we share lots of projects. But as you can see by that presentation, this woman puts it on her sleeve, and, and you just, you just, go Milton, Wisconsin, pull it up online, and what shows up is a picture of the Milton House. So kudos to Carrie and what she does and what she does for this community. And hopefully, when you guys are, you know, sorting out the budget, and, you know, and it's really been a very positive year budget-wise, you'll consider her request with what she's asking for. So that kind of leads into my presentation, which will be much more informal than that. And that's just the way it is with me, and if you know me, that's the way it goes. But anyway, first of all, thanks again for letting me talk to you folks again. I appreciate it, it's, it's a privilege to be here. I enjoy this once a year, and, you know, those of us at the Gathering Place are very transparent. If there's anything that you ever need or ever have a question about how we do things, you know, we're just a phone call away, you can just come on in and get the questions that you might have answered. But again, now that I'm thanking you, listen, the, the support that you gave us in 2019, we really appreciate that, it was $10,000. It goes a long way in, in helping us meet our daily needs with regards to what we do at the Gathering Place. So moving forward, I'm sure all of you have read, read our request for $15,000 in support for, in 2020. You know, as our application states, we're using or asking that money to help offset our operational costs. It's pretty simple. The simplest way to break down, so I don't take a lot of your time, is that, you know, and Al spoke a little bit about this earlier, the cost of utilities continue to grow up, 8%, annually, okay? The Gathering Place annual utility bill that we project in 2019 this year, if it continues like it is, is gonna be $14,800 for the year. If increases are 8% for next year, it's gonna exceed the, the $15,000 that we're asking. So basically, what, what our request is, is that you help us by your allocations, help us do three things. Pay for our, pay for our electricity, pay for, pay for our heat, and pay for our air conditioning. Simple utilities to run the building that we are in cost $15,000 or more a year. So simply stating, that, that's all I'm asking for in this request for 2020. Now, you guys know, and well, I'm, I'm assuming that, but I'm, I'm very confident, you folks know what the Gathering Place does and is to our community. I mean, your folks, your faces show up at several of our events, your family members. You come to what, what we've got going on, and we've got it going on. It's, it's very transparent, you can read the paper every week and see something that's going on special at the Gathering Place, okay? I don't, I don't need to, I, I know you folks know what we do, and I don't need to go into a long dissertation about how wonderful we are, 'cause I believe you know that. So, you know, instead of giving you a bunch of data that I know you already know, I'm just here to answer some questions. If you have any questions about the Gathering Place and how we spend our money, what we do day in and day out for the 251 days a year that we're open, I'd love to answer them for you and, and help you understand that whatever support you give us financially will go to a good cause, and I assure you that we appreciate it very much. I'll, I'll field any questions you have about the Gathering Place and, and our request.
Do you, or have you been seeing like an increase in weddings at the Gathering Place? It seems like you're doing really well in that area, or how, how is that going for you? I mean, it's just lovely that I see the pictures on Facebook, so.
Okay, well.
So how's that been going for you?
It's a good, it's a, it's a good question, and I'll, I'll just give you the straight facts. We generate about $50,000 a year in our budget for rentals, okay? And that has increased since about, well, 2015, it's increased. This year, we have no idea, but for 2019, our revenue generated from rentals is down. And we have no explanation for it, I don't know if you've, it was in the news a while ago that, you know, Best Events, you know, they do, they do millions of dollars a year, and, and their, their services that they're providing, the events that they're doing is also down, it's like thousands of dollars down from previous years. They don't have an explanation for it, we don't have an explanation for it. I know that our bookings for 2020 are up, but 2019 has been a slow year for rentals. That, and I'm just speaking weddings, you know, we, we do a lot of showers and birthday parties and celebrations of life, and that's a steady flow of just, of, of revenue and, and events. But the weddings are where you draw the money, when you got 150 folks in and, and they're renting the space for eight hours, that's how we generate money, and this year, it's a little down. Fortunately, you know, we do, we do fundraising and we're pretty successful at that, and, and as a lot of us nonprofits are, and, and, but we'll see that at the end of the year, it, it's gonna be down a little bit, a little bit meaning probably less than $10,000, but, you know, it's significant in our budget.
How's attendance been at your events you've had?
Pardon me?
Attendance been at your events you've had this year?
Attendance is really good, I mean, you know, we have, we have certain fundraises that we do every year, okay? You know, we do our fish boil, we do the Broad Bash, we, we hot dogs with Santa Pumpkin Fest. I mean, those things are, they're, they're really growing, and social media really helps, you know, for the community and folks with kids, I mean, it really plugs away, and, and we are really seeing an increase in those kinds of events. We, we have a membership that's probably about, well, it's really close to 500, and that's really pretty good, and it's up, but we're drawing folks from North Janesville and Edgerton and things like that. So we're, we're drawing people that, that are beyond our boundaries of Milton here to come to our program, and it speaks to our program, I mean, they, they're coming from Janesville because they like what we're doing. So we're, we're seeing an increase in that. And I, I think it's 'cause I have a wonderful staff and they do great things, but I, I don't know how else to answer that question.
I think, too, having had the opportunity to be a part of it and watch the different activities, it's been kind of nice to be able to see the changes in the activities that have allowed them to open up to not just elderly people, that they have developed activities that will allow people to bring in their whole families, which has developed more of a welcoming opportunity for their families and, and given them an opportunity to, to feel that they aren't just, you know, housing themselves and feeling alone, that they can feel happy about being together as a family. And it's very fun to watch and to be a part of them.
Dave, I was just wondering, are you seeing an increase on the meals on wheels and the transportation that the Gathering Place does for the lunches?
All right, well, I'll, I'll, gosh, I'm trying not to get long-winded on this, but just in case you do not know, the Gathering Place is, is one of Rock County's senior nutrition dining centers, okay? These dining centers are all across the country, and this is funded by the Older Americans Act dollars, okay? Comes right to Rock County, Rock County contracts with us to have our space be used for, for meals for elderly folks, mostly folks that are not as well-off as others. It's, it's basically, you get a well-balanced meal that's over, that, that nutritionists and dietary needs are met through the county guidelines and so on and so forth, but it's on a donation basis. If you're 60 years old or older, you can come and have a, a well-balanced nutritious meal at the Gathering Place with no questions asked, and if you throw a few bucks in the jar, great, if you don't, it's, it's, it's not a big deal. We serve, on average, 15 meals a day for folks that come in and dine in. That's, that's an average, there, you know, it fluctuates, but that's an average. But the meals that we have delivered to, to homebound seniors in the, in the, in our area, Milton, in the surrounding area, we average between 28 and 30 meals a day going out. So there's, we're serving close to 10,000 meals a year to elderly folks that, that use that program that was in our facility. And to answer your question, you know, and Carrie will attest to this, and any nonprofit that ever speaks to you, we survive on the backs of volunteers, okay? The Gathering Place has 250 volunteers that give us 12,000 hours a year, okay? Which includes some of the meals, delivery folks that, that deliver these meals out every day. And I mean, every day, you'll, you'll come in there, and there could be the church folks coming to it, there's, there's Gathering Place volunteers, but they're delivering meals every single day, Monday through Friday, to the, to the homebound. So the, the answer to that question, that, it's, you, people that volunteer in this program feel so good about what they're doing, I never have to worry about having to have, being short on volunteers because they love helping seniors. And a lot of times, for a senior that's in the senior nutrition program that gets a home-delivered meal, that may be their only contact with someone that particular day. So they're not only delivering a meal, they're making a social contact with somebody that's, that's homebound, that's really dependent upon them, and the relation- that's homebound, that's really dependent upon them, and the relationships that they develop are awesome. But, so to answer your question, our volunteers in that particular program, the senior nutrition program, are fantastic, and it's very stable, and it's very needed.
Anybody else for anything?
Listen, I appreciate your time, and you know you guys are always welcome at The Gathering Place anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all your programming that you do, and thanks for coming tonight.
Sure. Carrie, is this yours? Okay.
Okay, item number nine, discussion of possible action regarding the notice of public hearing on the 2020 City of Milton annual budget.
So again, I know we talked about this kind of at the end of my budget presentation, but the next step is we will have to approve a budget for publication, which will be approved tonight and then published on the 23rd, in the 23rd's, Courier's 23rd edition? 23rd of October, that's when it'll be published. It's not the 23rd edition, yeah. But we'll also want to kind of, it's not required, but as part of this action, but we'd like to kind of hammer out a calendar.
And I'll fore, these options are viable. I know in the slide we had the public hearing being on the 12th, but if we wanted to, if you look at option three, that would put it on the 19th, and option four, there's no special meeting. So those are all viable options.
So I, in the past, we've always had the public hearing first, and then that gives the public an opportunity to talk about the budget, to make any recommendations or have any questions answered, and we typically have not voted on the budget the night of the public hearing. So that's just a reminder for you guys to think about that.
Didn't we talk about this at the last meeting?
We talked about it, but no official. Right, we just, yeah.
We need to actually put a date in the resolution.
Okay.
We don't even, we don't have to even decide what night we're going to adopt the budget, but we do have to decide if we want to do the public hearing on November 12th or 19th, or some day in between even. But I try to stick to Tuesdays because that's what we typically have done, but.
I'm not 100% sure that I will be back on November 12th. Well, I know I'll be back on November 12th from seeing my grandson, but I don't know what time I'm coming back. So I don't know if I'll be able to make this meeting or not.
That would probably be the public, would be a date for the public hearing and not the final passage.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, the 12th is also a conflict for me.
As far as passage dates go, I'm probably going to be out of the country on the 19th. But I'm available on the 12th.
So, okay, so you're going to be.
We just need to make sure we have a quorum, I believe, for the public.
I would prefer not to have a meeting on the 26th.
So if we're going to narrow it down, and we don't want to have a meeting on the 26th, well, I guess there's two things. Do we prefer all these activities to take place on Tuesdays?
I don't have a preference that they take place on Tuesdays.
And for what it's worth, Mark did say we should probably have a quorum on the night of the public hearing.
Yeah.
Well, I know there were people that were saying like the 12th didn't work, so.
But the 13th would be fine. The day would be ideal for having all of us here, though, if we want to pass it.
Correct.
I'm busy all Wednesdays with.
So what day are you here?
Here that Thursday?
The 14th?
The 14th? Well, but you said at the moment, so are there days where you can actually commit to being at a meeting?
Or would we want to do like 5 o'clock on Wednesday instead of a 6 o'clock?
I can do 5 o'clock on Wednesday.
On the 13th?
I can also miss it if I have to. I'm, I'm just worried about that public hearing.
So I think what we're seeing is 5 o'clock Wednesday, November 13th for public hearing. So it is 5 o'clock on Wednesday, November 13th work for everyone for a public hearing? And we will do our best to send out multiple reminders because people are not going to be anticipating showing up on Wednesday, so.
And we do have a police commission scheduled that night at 6:00, so if we anticipate that it's going to go longer, maybe we can push the police commission meeting to 6:30. We can talk about that, though.
Okay, so again, the.
You can have a motion to that.
Yeah, so again, the public hearing would be Wednesday, November 13th at 5:00. Okay, so that's what we would place in the publication, but we'll need to approve that publication with that new date in it, date and time. Yes.
So moved. To.
Is there a resolution involved here or no?
We need to, we need to approve the notice of public hearing.
I move that the notice of public hearing be made for the 2020 budget, and that that public hearing would occur on November 13th, Wednesday at 5:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so, everybody is clear. You can do forward.
So then, we don't have to decide this tonight, but I guess as we're trying to map this out, and we're all here, and we're talking about it, and we have our calendars out, in terms of approving the budget then, if we went with option number one, we would approve it the following week at our regular council meeting on Tuesday, November 19th. That would be a regular council meeting, so if folks are trying to plan out or think, when do I need to show up? That would be on schedule. It wouldn't deviate. If we went to the 26th, that would be a special meeting.
That nobody wants.
And it would be the week of Thanksgiving, too. Okay.
Is everybody okay with the 19th?
There's a good chance I'll be out of the country, but I can try to Skype in if I can, but that's about 2:00 AM in the morning.
Okay, 19. Yeah, it's a regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, we would have a quorum. It's our regularly scheduled meeting, so.
So I'm assuming most people were planning on coming to that.
So we don't need a motion for that, but it's good for us to know so we can plan social media and dates and.
Party, we got to plan the budget party.
Okay, so thank you, everyone, for doing that. Did we take a vote?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Do we need anything else to be voted on?
Yeah, I mean, if you have feedback on the budget, we'll take that right now, we'll take that tomorrow, we'll take that in an email, we'll take that in a phone call.
All right, so I'm going to go to 10 then. Discussion of possible action regarding a job description for the city engineer position.
So based on the direction we received at the council meeting at the last council, or from the council at the last council meeting, to advertise for a city engineer, we have created the attached job description, and we would like that to be approved by the council prior to advertising for the job. We feel that that would be appropriate, that you would approve of the job before we try to hire somebody for it. And again, if we go through the recruitment process, no candidates either apply or emerge as potential candidates. We're not, just because we approve this doesn't mean we have to hire someone, but we feel it's appropriate due process to have an approved job description before we start advertising for it.
Make a motion to approve the job description. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Yes?
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
I just noticed that in the, there's a place where it says that he, there's a vehicle, that this person will be driving a truck, and I'm just wondering, is that in reference to a city truck, or are we expecting this person to have their own equipment?
Well, I believe in the context of this job description, it would be a vehicle, you know, it wouldn't, a dump truck, it wouldn't be, but.
We have a vehicle.
Yeah, and I think whether they would drive their own personal vehicle or a city-issued vehicle is to be determined, but we would prefer that it be a city-owned vehicle.
Okay, that was, thank you.
Anything else?
Yep, old squad car. Always Lamborghini?
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, we have a job description for the city engineer position. Review of September financial statements.
Absolutely nothing exciting, which is what you want. I feel like this is a rinse and repeat, but we're on pace. I see no concerns of 2019. As Al kind of referenced during the budget presentation, interest income is significantly up between the enterprise funds and the general fund. Through September, we have $154,000 that has come in.
And what did we budget?
Well, we budgeted $60,000 in the general fund, and there's 90 there, and I do not recall the budget numbers for the enterprise funds, but we have blown past those numbers.
And rewind 12 months ago, we were thinking, ew, 60,000, are we going to be able to get that?
But we're in a declining rate environment now, so.
Don't anybody like get their hopes up. Any other questions or comments for Dave? Okay, staff reports, committee reports, anything?
I'll just, just a comment on the plan commission meeting tonight. Excellent job on the part of the city and the developers. There was a couple things that came up, public safety, or maybe safety more for the residents living in those apartments. We added a couple things to the, I guess, to the contingencies would be the way to say it, and that was a fencing around one of the water retention pond areas because it was close to a playground, recreational area, so that children wouldn't wander necessarily into there. And then putting some signs up to remind children to stay out of there. Again, benefit to both the community, we won't have a tragedy hopefully, and also benefit to the property owners in terms of trying to prevent problems. So that was something that happened at Plan Commission, so, just so you guys know about that.
That is quite a development that is going to occur, major development for our community. Any other committee reports?
We have a fire commission meeting this week.
Fire at 7:00?
Yes.
And where is it at?
That would be at the town hall.
Anything else?
We completed a work plan for 2020 for historic preservation.
Oh, good job, historic preservation. The council passes the budget, they'll complete their work plan for 2020. Okay, staff reports, chief?
Thanks for the Halloween proclamation tonight. It's also 72 days until Christmas, so I'm going to give you some Christmas news. We received a $3,000 grant from Walmart for our Shop With Cop program this year that Janesville has turned over to our department, and so we'll be working on a date to get that scheduled. We have a meeting on Friday with the school district who are going to select the students to participate in that program, and the Chamber of Commerce is going to provide gifts to the rest of the family so no one feels left out from that event. So looking forward to that, and we'll hear more as it gets closer.
Ashley?
Jerry from the Census Bureau is going to be at the library on Monday from 2:00 to 5:00 to help with jobs that are available through the 2020 census. And then the library, we have access to some digital scanners, so we're starting to scan some of the library. We have slides, little slides, and some are pictures and everything. We found some slides with photos from the groundbreaking of the building, so we're scanning those, and those will be available on the Recollection Wisconsin website soon. It's very exciting. Yeah.
Inga?
Ashley and I started meeting with the Story Garden Subcommittee again, so we met again on Monday, so it's been a long time since our last meeting, so we're starting to reinvigorate that group and nail down some different plans to move forward in the spring. And we also had our first Complete Count Committee for the Census.
Oh, yes.
Last week on Thursday, so we're working on scheduling another date and time to meet with the group and to start making action plans, I guess, to start an awareness campaign towards the end of the year, beginning of next year.
So it's not too late for anybody to join our Complete Count Committee, so if you missed the first meeting, or somebody you know missed the first meeting, please tell them to contact the city because you can still sign up and participate. There is going to be plenty for everyone to do, so that was a good meeting for us to attend. Because Milton matters. That is our, it's our slogan.
And we are Milton.
It matters to Milton, that's our slogan. We'll get that right. Howie?
Okay, Splash Park started to get painted. It's not done yet, but hopefully by the end of the week. Front Street Curb started today, and hopefully they got the curb done tomorrow there in Windsor Court. We started leaf collection today. Liberty Park, the northeast portion is going to have the fence replaced, so it'll get tore down and then put up in November part of it. We planted a lot of trees out on the highway. We're going to continue that. We did have to order salt and sand for the winter today, so that's already ordered, for, you know, for just the end of the season. The lift station work on Parkview, that's going to be closed yet tomorrow. Hopefully that's done by tomorrow. They're starting to flush hydrants. We sent out quite a few hazardous tree letters again. They have until May to get those cut, and the parks will be closed down right after Halloween because a lot of the sports are going till November 1st for using the parks, so.
Wow, that was a lot, Howie.
It's been a good two weeks.
Dan, anything?
No.
Yeah.
Everybody kind of stole mine. I was going to talk about the Complete Count Committee, but, no, no updates. I spoke for 38 minutes, so.
Now 39.
Yeah. Took me two cookies.
So I just want to say that the fire department had a great pancake breakfast. It was delicious as usual. They had a good turnout, so another successful fundraiser for them, so that was great. And we did have the Complete Count Committee, and thank you, Inga, for providing us budget cookies. We appreciate that so much. And did you all want to do just a quick team-building exercise? Y'all said yes, so. Be quick, you can share either your favorite Halloween candy, or a favorite Halloween costume that either you wore, your kids wore, you'd like to wear, you'd like to see somebody wear. Easy, easy peasy.
My wife wants to do characters from Clue for this Halloween, my kids and myself and wife. Characters from Clue.
As a child of the 80s, my most memorable one was a homemade Rubik's Cube.
Do you want to be a pet rock?
One year, we went out with the kids, and they were all dressed as Charlie Brown characters, and I was the great pumpkin in a wheelchair. So that was cool. So that was cool.
So whole.
No, but I'll let you do it for you.
In third grade, I spent probably two weeks working on a princess hat for myself and then I got chickenpox and I couldn't go.
I ended up being a, I ended up being a witch often because we had an awesome witch mask that, I don't know, the thing was around for 20 years, I think. Every generation of my family wore this witch mask.
I'm going to be Dwight from the office for this Halloween, so I'm very excited.
I think the whole council should be someone from the office. Or Parks and Rec, right?
When I was like in third grade, I dressed up as, you know, in one of the old woman costumes, you know, the big rubber man, like, and nobody knew it was me. It was really, really funny. That was my more memorable costume. Besides the plastic masks that you couldn't breathe. You couldn't breathe, you couldn't see.
My favorite part of Halloween is when the trick-or-treaters call, come to my house and I get to see all their costumes. So I'm going to go with the candy thing and I have to say that it's got to be, for this time of the year, better honey.
I don't know that I have a favorite one. The one that I always think of when people ask me that question is, my mom was a very talented seamstress. She made all of our clothes and stuff. And she made me, and I was a red M&M one year with big sunglasses and she handmade it. And at Harrison Elementary School, I think I won a costume contest that year or something like that. So that's what I guess, it's pretty cool.
Hey, so going down the left sideline here.
I like anything that's gummy. I can't think of a costume, so I'll go with gummy worms.
From Colorado.
From Colorado? What?
I'm not bringing gum.
That'd be 79 days you can get it south of here.
Somebody's counting down.
Okay, it was supposed to be Sylvester the Cat, but a lot of people thought it was the Ham's Bear. So it didn't quite work out.
Well, it would have to be, in terms of memorable costumes for my children when they're young, let's say two or three years old, with one son as a dragon and a daughter who, as two years old, is a gunk, so.
Kim? Kim, oh nice, oh. So you're not eating salads all the time then, are you? We got everybody? Do we got a motion to adjourn? Oh, when are we going to meet again? November 5th. Okay, so we were going to meet before the other meeting. Everybody got that? Okay. All right, so motion to adjourn. So move to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, see you November 5th. Happy Hal-